A pleasure to meet you. The firing of flag. Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. And I'll say Commissioner Edwards is on a tour of water infrastructure and facilities in the county and region. And Commissioner Mudge is online. So we have quorum. And let's see, we can go over the agenda we were just noting before, but there is one item to remove that we will not go into the executive session, any other?
It's going to be Resolution 2024-19, the board appointment for 2024. We're going to go ahead and move that to the June 18th meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
So that's agenda item twenty-one.
Yes, we're going to remove twenty-one and twenty-four, please.
Twenty-three, the executive session. But we will, yeah, okay.
Twenty-one and twenty-three?
Twenty, correct, twenty-one and twenty-three, but we will, we'll keep twenty-four, the open discussion of the IGA.
There's no other changes almost to approve the agenda with the removal of item twenty-one and twenty-three.
All right, I'll second.
No further discussion for me?
Yes, so ju- so we're moving, just to clarify, we're moving twenty-three, the executive session, but we will keep twenty-four.
Yes.
Correct, okay, great. Call for a vote to approve?
Aye.
Aye. The agenda is approved with those two removals. Community information items, oh, and actually just quickly, we should probably, we can probably remove legislative updates until yeah, sometime. When the next legislative session? I don't have any community information items. Sarah, or Commissioner Mudge?
Yep, so just another reminder, in July, July eleventh through fifteenth, we'll be doing the team on fire mitigation along counter at seventeen. And we haven't opened, we sent letters out, we've got some feedback back to the RFP management website, you can go on there and inquire about getting some hazard and work on on your property, especially if you especially need help physically to do that work, but we are collecting soliciting interest. And then the co-swap work, while part of the support around community field and the same campus. At some point at the end of this year, I believe we plan to burn those files that were created last year. And then I did have a request to Tim, County Manager, if you could, I've been getting a lot of questions about the shuttle, and I am not certain about the status of the timing on that, so Tim, if you might give us an update on the MMOF planning, the safety planning projects and the shuttle, that would be awesome. Thanks.
Sure, happy to, so for the transit, the RFP was issued on May twentieth, proposals are due June twenty-first from interested vendors with an anticipated service start date of September. So that, that is out and that the RFP is for someone to use that MMOF funding to provide the transit services with their own coaches until the county coaches come available. All of that is paid for by the MMOF funding through CDOT and the federal government. For the transit planning and safety and traffic calming and alternative truck routes. CDOT has approved the RFP, Legal has approved the RFP, I need to fine tune the timeline and then get that issued, so that issue date should be this week, and that RFP should move a bit quicker because it's more studying and design work. And again, those are paid for with MMOF multimodal operational funding through CDOT and the federal government.
Thanks. And again, I mentioned Commissioner Edwards is on a tour with Aurora Water, I believe hosting that on on water infrastructure in the, in the region. Public comment?
Sorry, it's the Water Education Colorado that's doing so they're the overall host for the couple of days of informational sessions.
Okay, thanks, thanks. Public comment, items not on the agenda. I'll look online first, Aaron, I assume you're here for the, for the later agenda item on the Silver King?
Yeah, that's correct.
And is that Karen, is that Karen Lewis?
Oh, yes.
Okay, anyone in the room for public comments? Not seeing anything, okay. So moving on to agenda item number one, discussion and consideration of a malt vinous? And Spiritus Liquor Special Event Permit for Leadville Sports Hall of Fame Stage Race on July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four. Liz?
Good morning, so the Leadville Sports Hall of Fame has put in an application for a special event permit for malt Venus and Spiritus Liquor. They are seeking to use the Lake County rodeo grounds, which you granted permission for earlier last week. They have paid both their state, their county fee as well as their state fee, and they have done their ten day posting as well, so all looks in order.
Okay, and remind me, sorry, I keep, do we need to actually open a sort of public hearing or public comment portion for this, or is that sort of happened with the posting?
In terms of, I don't think we need for this special event permit.
Okay, okay. Great, thanks. Okay.
I'll move to approve the malt Venus, sorry, Venus and Spiritus Liquor Special Event Permit for Leadville Sports Hall of Fame. And that's the stage race on July twenty-eighth, twenty-four, sorry.
Yeah, I'll second.
Nothing further for me?
Great, is call for vote?
Aye.
Aye. The liquor special event permit for Leadville Sports Hall of Fame Stage Race on July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four is approved. Great. Agenda item two, discussion and consideration, what is going to call a liquor special event permit for Leadville Sports Hall of Fame Silver Rush Run and Bike on July sixth and July seventh, twenty twenty-four.
So this is the same deal, they have submitted all their applications, both locally as well as to the state, paid their fees, done their ten day public notice, and it all seems in order.
Okay, great. Sarah, any questions or otherwise?
No. Yep, I'll move to, sorry, a good small Venus and Spiritus Liquor Special Event Permit for Leadville Sports Hall of Fame Silver Rush Run and Bike as well as for July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, I'll second.
Question for me?
Great, call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye, so the liquor special event permit for Leadville Sports Hall of Fame Silver Rush Run and Bike on July sixth and seventh, twenty twenty-four is approved. Moving on to the special event permit for the mountain bike race, June thirteenth, fourteenth, fifteenth, sixteenth and run, June twenty-one, two, three and four, twenty twenty-four. Marla, you have the floor.
So this is the annual MTV camp and the run camp. The MTV camp is held June thirteenth through the sixteenth, the run camp, June twenty-first through twenty-third. This is the first of these six events for this year. And we have the organizer with us, if we have any additional questions, we'd like answers.
I didn't have any additional questions, everything sort of seemed in order, Sarah, do you have any?
I, I don't, no, thank you. I'll move to approve the special event permit for mountain bike race, June thirteenth, fourteenth, fifteenth, sixteenth and run on June twenty-first, twenty-second and twenty-third of twenty twenty-four.
Okay, I'll second.
No further discussion for me?
Great, call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye, so the special event permit for the mountain bike race, June thirteenth through sixteenth and the run, June twenty-first through twenty-third of twenty twenty-four is approved.
Do we need to clarify that that's camp, not race? Are we all good with that? Sorry. I didn't catch up before you did that, does it, do you want to, sorry? The permits indicate camp, so we're good, as long as you guys, I just want to make sure what was up there and what you agree on.
Can we change that, I'm sorry, I did wonder why the four date is.
Yeah, let's just, let's just go ahead and do it again with the word camp in there, just so it's crystal clear.
What do you want?
I, I mean, I think let's just, I don't know if we need to like vacate in some way the previous vote, but I think if we just make
and you through the motion, but I would, Commissioner Mudge, if you would request to amend?
Okay, I'll move to amend the previous motion to actually read approval of the special event permit for mountain bike.
Great, I'll second that amended motion and call for a vote on that amendment?
Aye.
Aye, so that is properly amended to reference the camp, not the race, great. Thank you, everyone. And thanks to him for keeping an eye on muting. Moving on to number four, discussion and consideration of a special event permit for Leadville Trail Marathon Heavy Half on June twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth.
So this is the annual Leadville Marathon and Heavy, and Heavy Half Race, these occur on June, June twenty-eighth and June twenty-ninth this year.
It is only, yeah, so the twenty-eighth is your expo, the twenty-ninth is the race.
But that, yeah, the two days for the event. Okay?
I'll move to approve the special event permit for Leadville Trail Marathon Heavy Half and the expo on June twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four.
Great, I'll second, and no comments for me?
Nothing for me?
Call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye, so the special event permit for the Leadville Trail Marathon Heavy Half Expo and National Race on the twenty-eighth, June twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four is also approved. Great. Number five, discussion and consideration of a special event permit for the Silver Rush Fifty Run and Mountain Bike, July fourth.
That is not correct.
Oh, yeah, so what are the actual dates?
So July sixth and seventh, the fifth is the packet pickup at Dutch Henry, but sixth and seventh are your race dates.
Okay. And that's for both of, both of them?
The sixth is the run, the seventh is the mountain bike.
Okay, so we'll say just for July sixth and seventh, twenty twenty-four. No questions on the application or the permit materials for me, so look for, look for a motion on agenda item number five.
Okay, I'll move to approve the special event permit for Silver Rush Fifty Run and Mountain Bike, July seventh, twenty twenty-four.
Second?
Nothing further.
Great, call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye, the special event permit for Silver Rush Fifty Run and Mountain Bike on July sixth and seventh, twenty twenty-four is approved. Right, Sarah, I just wanted to ask, is it easier, I, if, since I have the paper in front of me, I could read out the motions and you could just say so moved, if that's easier, given that you're remote? I wasn't sure, wasn't sure what your setup was there with computer screens.
I, I also have a, but whatever you think moves smoother, of course.
Okay. Number six, discussion and consideration of a special event permit for Leadville Stage Race, July twenty-sixth through twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four? We have the, great, thank you. Marla, any comments or?
This is, we have all the dates correct on this one.
This one's correct.
This is also an annual permit, so everything has maintained.
Great, okay, I'll look for a motion for the spec- to approve the special event permit for Leadville Stage Race, July twenty-sixth through twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four?
So move.
Second? Seeing no further comments, call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye, so special event permit for Leadville Stage Race, July twenty-sixth through twenty-eight, twenty twenty-four is approved. Okay, a lot of events.
You're telling me.
Agenda item number seven, discussion and consideration of a special event permit for Leadville Trail One Hundred Mountain Bike and Trail Ten K Run on August eighth through eleventh, twenty twenty-four. Marla?
So I have this as the expo for August eighth and ninth, the actual race for August tenth for the mountain bike race, and the one hundred run is on August eleventh.
Nope, the ten K.
Or the ten K, pardon me. The ten K run.
It could look like a hundred if you didn't see that.
It's printed right.
Okay, so, sorry, expo eighth and ninth, rate the mountain bike race on the tenth and the trail on the
Ten K, the ten K's on the eleventh.
Ten K on the eleventh.
Haven't you run that every year, Commissioner?
I have not. I like to run when no one else is on the trail.
It's weird how that works, me too.
Okay, so, so I'm sorry, so, so the mountain, the mountain bike?
One hundred.
One hundred is on the tenth, and the ten K is on the eleventh, okay, great. So look for a motion to approve the special event permit for the Leadville Trail One Hundred Mountain Bike and Trail Ten K, the expo on the eighth and ninth, the mountain bike race on the tenth and the ten K on the eleventh, all twenty twenty-four.
So move.
Seeing no comments or questions, look, call for a vote?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, I will second that motion that Commissioner Mudge made, thank you. I'll go a tiny bit slower.
I do, I do have a question, and, and I know we had work sessions with Tamara, but Tamara are we doing the helicopter thing or not? I think the answer is no, but maybe you want to take a minute to give us some updates there?
Yeah, it's, it looks like they want to make it a go, and I was just chatting with Josh to make sure we had whatever stipulations you all want, that they will land at the airport only, they won't land anywhere else, as we all agree.
Thank you.
Yeah, for sure.
Is that, is that specified in the materials or, okay, great. Okay.
In the operations plan.
Great. Okay, call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye, so that special event permit for the Leadville Trail One Hundred Mountain Bike and Trail Ten K, again, expo eighth and ninth, race on the tenth and ten K on the eleventh is approved.
When we get to, I've been doing amazing jobs supporting on the communication side, when we get to July beginning of August, I think, one of those that we send out, and we put helicopter on that, and those things going out, so that
Is it for all of them then?
Nope, only for the one hundred mountain bike. So I just want to start to get that out, and have that over later.
Okay.
But we'll let folks know in advance, as we discussed as well.
Great. Okay. Agenda item number eight, the special event permit for the Leadville Trail One Hundred on August fourteenth through seven through eighteen.
Sixteen is expo, seventeen, eighteen is the race, fourteen, fifteen, not sure.
Okay.
We just had it incorporated in there, and it was called event setup, so I thought maybe you were looking for
For the course setup?
Yeah.
Just so we know that if you wanted to do that, it'd just be course, setting up the course.
Okay, let's, I mean, let's leave it there since that's the full date of activities, so we'll keep it as fourteenth through eighteenth. So I'll look for a motion to approve the special event permit for the Leadville Trail One Hundred on August fourteenth through eighteenth, twenty twenty-four.
So move.
Second, any questions or comments?
No.
None? None, call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye, so the special event permit for the Leadville Trail One Hundred, August fourteenth through eighteenth, twenty twenty-four is approved. Okay.
Can I ask one question?
Yeah.
So I just sent you an email, and I'm allergic, it's traffic so wild. So it's my understanding that if it's in the city, the city needs to issue the permit in the application from the Department of Revenue at State's copy of deed, lease or written permission of the owner for using the premises. I reached out to the city twice, had a hundred back from them, so I'm happy to work with the V O C C to draft a letter, but that's a part of your official submission application to the state. So did you say you already have your permit? So, chicken today, right?
Let me go check that that's what was sent, is all of them, including those two, but I can talk to Greg to make sure.
So I'm happy to get those letters for you for using the county premises, I was expecting that someone would have reached out because it's a part of the application.
Fair enough.
And I, I reached out, so we can help clean that up however we need to.
I will help support that.
Awesome.
Thanks for sharing that, appreciate it. Thank you all for your time, appreciate it.
Great. Thank you. Hey, fair enough.
Thank you for appearing.
Thanks, Marla, appreciate it, always been helpful, I appreciate you.
Commissioner, on the next item, number nine. Chris Geiger indicated he was going to attend to assist with any question, like, if this would be possible to bump this to the next one, he, he had a ten o'clock that he thought he'd be available by eleven thirty for him, so that's why we put him down far down, didn't know that those would go so quickly this morning.
Yeah, for sure, we can
We could go to ten and then come back.
Yeah, or we can just, yeah, hold, hold that until we're ready, great. So, yeah, and CPD's here, so moving on to agenda, or jumping for the time being to ten, discussion and consideration of the Planning Commission's land recommendation, official action recode, is that the right word?
Oh, to be record, official action record.
Thank you, I was like, what does O A R stand for? And staff report for file twenty-four oh eight for the Silver King P U D. And?
Thank you. I have a recommendation from the Planning Commission for the board. At the May twenty-eighth joint public hearing, the Lake County Planning Commi- Planning Commission unanimously approved a motion to recommend conditional approval with six members in favor, the original was made by Joey Edwards and seconded by Steve Stevens. The Planning Commission recommends conditional approval to the Board of County Commissioners of File twenty-four oh eight, a rezoning from B Business to P U D planned unit development, according to the Silver King P U D zoning control document, to be recorded for the approximately one point five acre site at twenty twenty North Poplar Highway twenty-four legally described as the southwest quarter of section thirteen Township Nine South, Wage Eighty West, with the following conditions. Number one, the Silver King P U D shall participate in the future planning and creation of an integrated pedestrian and bicycle trail system as adjacent property development occurs. Number two, a final plat alta survey as reviewed and approved by the Lake County Community Planning and Development Department be recorded along with the P U D zoning control document. Number three, the site shall provide the adequate number of required ADA parking spaces. Number four, the site shall remain dark sky compliant. Number five, consideration will be given to providing a recycling drop off for tenants. And number six, all representations made by the applicant in his application and in hearing shall be considered as conditions of approval and further found under the Land Development Code, section three point thirteen point three and section three eleven point four H one through eight, the proposed rezoning is found by the Planning Commission or Board of County Commissioners respectfully to be inconsistent with or not in compliance with all parts of the Lake County Comprehensive Plan. However, the proposed rezoning bears a reasonable relationship to the welfare of the community, and there has been a change in the conditions of the neighborhood that supports the requested rezoning. And further finding as conditioned, the approval criteria of the Land Development Code, section three point eleven point four H one through eight, P U D preliminary approval criteria have been adequately met. So that is the motion that I have and recommendation from the Planning Commission. After just a bit more time and review with the assistance of Legal, we have an additional condition, I have it typed up for you today, that we'd like to present from staff, and that that is that the applicant shall be required to submit an annual lease audit as of January first, twenty twenty-five to the Leadville Lake County Regional Housing Authority and Lake County Community Planning and Development, and ensure occupancy requirements are complied with in the future. So we just wanted to support, the zoning control document would be modified slightly with this condition because of the zoning says that the Regional Housing Authority may elect to audit. And just to keep the project on the rails, we are putting the onerous on the applicant, we have discussed this with the applicant that they would annually submit that lease audit, so that we can ensure the occupancy requirements. So I do have an additional, because it won't be within
Okay.
So. But just, we just have that one additional after review by Legal.
And just in terms of when we come to make a motion, and I mean, you've read them both into the record, so we'll just verbally note that
Yeah.
There's that additional
If you make the motion inclusive of that.
Additional condition.
Oh, Chris Geiger's saying.
I had a question on lease, is it clear what a lease audit means, like, is that pretty clear to your satisfaction that?
I think it's very clear, and I think that's another reason for having community planning and development help assist with that. So we talked about that a bit today with the applicants, about, you know, creating a spreadsheet and kind of an efficiency around that, so then it becomes a standard, and then they can produce that annually, and so that we can just ensure that compliance. It just feels like a better way to manage it for, for implementations for both sides.
And the details of that discussion would be captured in condition seven, the representations of the applicant, I just want to make sure that we sort of all are on the same page and know what an audit means.
Yes, yes.
Like, like what needs to be covered, you know?
Further discuss that, and this would allow us to establish that relationship with CPD and the applicant.
Okay. Sarah, do you have any questions or comments or?
Yeah, I would love to just take a moment and say that this, this application was a challenge for me. I, I was I understand our housing issues and I was, I'm pretty concerned about changing commercial property as well, because we have to do kind of both of these things economic development and just me proposing these. But do you think that after hearing the three, I think it's three, yeah, three hearings? That came from all three hearings and kind of the development of the proposal? I have a lot more comfort in the possibility of conditioning any rooms to be moved back to commercial, should it not be useful as going housing anymore? Do you think the applicant at the last meeting brought up the renovations and how those may very well be improvements that would be necessary or, or complimentary to the kind of lodging, commercial lodging spaces that we are needing in this community, that we kind of saw those similar results in lodging study? And so I, I, I'm glad that, that there is a partnership here, and I am glad that there is a method which to pivot, should that be necessary. I hope that in the future, if that comes to be, that the county makes it relatively easy, but But only time will tell what, what will be needed. So I just, I wanted to share that, thank you.
Yeah, tha- tha- thank you, Sarah, and also I'll, I'll echo those thoughts and also I do appreciate the, you know, th- this was a hard one through the planning commission and the hearing, and I appreciate the applicants, you know, coming back and continuing to work. I think I'll add one thing for, for me, I, I appreciate that there's been a lot of thought about making sure that the affordable housing benefit is sort of spread more broadly across the community and not sort of reserved, if you will, for, for, for one entity. So I appreciate the flexibility and, and thought that has gone in to getting us to this point. Let's see, any?
I do have a quick question, sorry. The, the, I, I do wonder, this is really a side note, I guess, but the, the condition for the connectivity to the participation and the connectivity side routes, which I'm wanting to be as neighboring adjacent personal develop, I I guess I wonder, you know, I, I am eager to communicate with the city on a different, different note and see if we can move those easements along that are dedicated. And we have no idea if we, like, what the intention might be for the phase two or phase three. Is it, well, I was gonna ask if it's worth, uh, I'm, I'm really sorry, just talking out loud, I think I'm out. I, I guess it's worth just noting that whether it's full on development or just the connections and like that particular development, I suppose both the conversations will have to, have to happen.
And to that concern, Sarah, I, you know, we have dedicated city-county planning very intentionally, you know, meetings, and we're certainly on the same page. Planning department wise, city and county on, on those being a high priority piece in any future development. So we can make sure that, you know, we continue to support those conversations and engage in those. And so just, just some assurance that Chaven and I, you know, see those as, as vital connections and critical mutual planning pieces together.
Thank you. And another note, as you said, the audit, I do, I do like this piece, and I also might ask the applicant, I think this, I think this, you know, I, I think I remember potentially you think maybe you leave housing people by the end of the summer in these spaces, I'm not sure. Um, but I do think that this project will give the county and housing authority a lot of insight as to how many workers you are, you know, who, who you are housing, period. And I would love it if that relationship could remain open to share your experiences as you, as you go through implementing and housing books and getting leases, that would be extremely helpful.
Of course, yeah, we're happy to, happy to share all that information and partner on that.
Thank you. I'm home.
Okay, thanks. So I will look for a motion to approve the statement of motion on file twenty four oh eight as read into the record with the additional condition also read in.
So moved.
I'll second. I'm not seeing any additional comments or questions, and we had a good discussion, call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye. So that statement of motion on file twenty four dash oh eight for the Silver King P U D is approved. And again, thank you to everyone involved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Make a note for record keeping on the O A R, maybe C C can, we can redo that because we'll have to add that condition on the official action record that I just read in. So we can, we'll just need to capture that before we record it.
Okay, great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Commissioners, Chris Geiger is, is on line with us now, so if we can.
Go back to nine.
To number nine. And, um, Chris, I'll, I'll take liberty of just giving a little bit of background information to introduce this for the commissioners. This is on the agenda, it's a request for considerations, such as, you know, stipulation, and a water case has been pending for quite a while. Rising out the application of David Smith in Mylan, Kuhn, I presume, or something close to that pronunciate, pronunciation, I apologize if I'm not getting that right. But the applicant sought a water right for Caden and Elissa Lisa's pond, which is a historical beaver pond in the east fork of Bartley Gulch, located on their property. Lake County had filed an opposition in this case to protect its interest in the Dairy Ditch number three water right. The primary concern with the application was applicant's assertion that they were only required to replace out of priority evaporative depletions from the enlarged additional point zero four five acre pond surface area. And Lake County disagreed with that conclusion because the applicant noted that they intended to improve the pond and make it a permanent structure, whereas beaver ponds are typically temporary and secede into medicine and fens and such. Lake County Water Council, Balcom and Green, negotiated a settlement stipulation under which the applicants have agreed to replace the surface evaporation from the entire surface area as well as including clarification and improvements in the language that will aid the division engineers' office in administering the structure, including language that better describes the water supply counting requirements, for example, diversions, depletions, and replacement operations, and, and required measurement and outlet devices. So Chris Geiger is here today with a request for authorization to accept that settlement stipulation and resolution of the Lake, of Lake County statement in opposition to this case. And Chris, I'll turn it over to you if there's other detail or information you'd like to share.
Thanks, Chris. I appreciate your patience, I'm jumping from Zoom call to Zoom call today. I think Chris sufficiently summarized the information that I would provide to you. And I, I believe that you may have a May twenty first attorney client letter in your board packet from me that contains all of that detail and maybe a little more. So with consideration for your time, is there additional information or do you have additional questions that you would like to ask of me?
I, I don't, I, I thought the background material was clear and seemed like, yeah, we had worked through it to protect the county's interests. So I didn't have any clarifying questions or discussion. And so, okay, yeah, great. So, yeah. Chris, do you have any other?
Nothing further, not, not support Mr. Geiger's recommendation in this matter.
Okay, great. That, thanks for working through all that. So we didn't have a lot to go through today. So I'll just, I'll call for a motion to approve the proposed settlement stipulation and water case number two zero C W three zero eight six regarding the application of Smith. Sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, so look for a motion on that.
So moved.
Great, I'll second.
No further discussion for me.
Great, then call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye. The proposed settlement stipulation is approved.
All right, thank you, we'll execute the stipulation documents and return them to the applicants, and when we have a complete package, we'll provide that to council and Mr. Burdenman for the county's files.
Thanks so much, Chris.
Thank you. Thank you all.
All right. Kristen, that's all, all good in terms of those next steps, okay? Great. Then we will get back on track to number eleven. Discussion and consideration of an award for the twenty twenty four summer airport paving project. Josh, you are up.
So I submitted a recommendation, sorry, recommendation of award letter that was provided by Kimley Horn. They did a bid tabulation from the two bids we received two weeks ago, I think two weeks ago.
Yeah.
Per F A rules, we must select, if we do choose to award, we must select the lowest bidder. That lowest bidder was American Road Maintenance. Total, with all schedules, the total cost of the project was two hundred ninety five thousand, five hundred twenty four dollars and twenty five cents. With the engineer's estimate of six forty nine, three oh five, twenty five, so ecstatic that that was much lower than we thought it was gonna be. So.
Don't say that out loud.
So they, they, honestly, our engineers were looking to see kind of where they, because they've done a lot of research and. But based on that award, the D V participation goal for this project, so disenfranchised or disadvantaged business enterprises was point four two percent. American Road Maintenance has indicated that their D V participation will be two point zero two percent, so they meet and clear that objective. And based on, currently, I should clarify as well, schedule one and schedule two are the federally eligible pieces of this maintenance projects. So that total for American Road Maintenance would be two hundred thirty nine thousand, two hundred seventy seven dollars. Schedule three, which is ineligible, must come out of local funding, but that's to repair the parking lot in the road to the fence essentially for the airport, would have to be county funds, and that total would be, let's see, can I? Fifty six thousand, two hundred forty seven dollars and twenty five cents. So should we choose to award all three schedules? That fifty six thousand dollar amount that I just mentioned will need to come from local funding. The total project costs, I think I already mentioned, for schedule one and two was two thirty nine, two hundred thirty nine thousand, two hundred seventy seven.
Okay, then, then I, great, yeah, and the tabulation is clear in the package materials. I guess a question I have is for that schedule three that we would have to cover, do you, do you have that in your budget for twenty four? I mean, are you recommending that we include that since we have folks mobilized?
Yes, so I, unfortunately, I did not have these estimates to look before the budget process. So I did not have that put in the budget. It would have to come from, I, I believe, the general fund to cover that cost. I do recommend that we do it because it'll help keep the parking lot, it should save us money in the future. And we, like you said, we already have all this equipment and company mobilized up here. And it would cost us more in the future to do it outside of that, so.
So, yeah.
Josh, remind, so we don't, there is not money in the airport fund to cover that? And this is resurfacing the existing parking lot or expanding that around?
No, it's just, we're gonna seal coat the parking lot and then do some crack repair and some pavement repair. So it's not gonna be a full resurface, we're not repaving the whole thing, there will be some paving. For some of the deeper cracks, they will mill them down and and repair them to, so they'll actually last longer. So it's just a, a seal coat and some maintenance, some pavement repair versus an actual resurface. That's also the extent of what we're going to do, the runway and the ramp as well. The runway itself is still in very, very good shape. Just needs a seal coat for the most part, and then they'll repaint it. The ramp has some major crack repair that we're going to do, and because this came in under budget, we're going to expand some of that to cover a little bit more. And the price will not change, and then. Yeah, so then, then the parking lot itself just needs, a, a seal coat and everything will help us maintain it, and that way it costs us less in the future, because it'll last longer. Currently, the parking lot itself is in pretty decent shape, there's a few cracks here and there. The road up the hill and you make the turn to kind of go out the gate is, is, needs some repairs. So that's kind of where we're at right now. And that's why I, I recommend doing that, just, it'll help us save money in the future by keeping that.
That includes the county road?
Not the entire county road, just to the gate.
From the, inside the airport?
Yeah, so ba- from the fence line of the airport where the gate is, down to the F, the F B O office. The, the, the county road itself will not be touched, which is also in, it's okay shape at this point, so.
I do remember you, you mentioned that difference between what was covered by grant funding. And sorry for not catching that in the materials, I, we haven't had a discussion about whether we can find money, and the general fund is here for that. I, Tim, or Tim, Steph, do we, do you feel okay from budget wise approving this? Also, I mean, a question.
And we want to know something that the fund is paying back to the general fund, or, yeah, what's the suggestion?
For covering that fifty six K, or, and maybe a related question is, I don't know, I, I feel like we had quite a while to approve, or some more time to approve this contract, if we need to come back and discuss where to find that fifty six K? Or do you feel like that's in other paving money? I, 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 I guess the question to staff is, do we, do you feel ready with a recommendation on covering that fifty six K? Or do you want to sort of come back to, I mean, we could try to find a special meeting if it's urgent or come back to our next regular meeting to like do a supplemental budget or figure out exactly how we're covering that fifty six K? How would you like to?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with moving forward to fifty six K, it won't need to be a budget adjustment, which, you know, we can do on the, on the, your regular meeting on the twenty eighth.
Okay.
Adding that, and then we can work out repayment, like we've done in the past, the airport fund, to the general fund.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I, Jeff, you all right now, we should be able to cover that back to the general fund, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that we can, if you want to approve, um, I don't know, I guess pending budget approval on the twenty eighth, or eighteenth? When's the next one, eighteen?
Yeah.
Or approve the first schedules one and two, final approval of all, of schedule three on the twenty, on the eighteenth.
Uh, sure, if that's what, if that's what we need to do to do that, then.
I mean, we can probably communicate to the awardee, you know, that just, I mean, it's largely an administrative step that we just, I mean, I feel like before approving a contract, we should probably have the budget approval in place for it.
Okay.
So.
When, when are we mobilizing on this project, Josh?
Since we have not awarded yet, we have not had any discussions with the contractor about when their schedule will be, so.
Okay. I mean, I would see if, if we can. I, I'm comfortable approving this now with the payback from the airport fund.
Yeah. Sarah, I think kind of a tiny bit, you're, you're, you're comfortable doing, like, authorizing staff to move forward with discussions on all three schedules? I mean, I, I, yeah, I, I feel pretty confident that we will approve the budget.
Yeah, and, I mean, especially with the payback and Josh's projections of revenue coming in, that's always a pretty good, like, solid. That's, that's not a guess, I, you know, those are good projections, they have good numbers, and those revenues have always increased. So I, I would be comfortable approving this and all schedules with the repayment to the general fund, but the airport fund. Now, and if you want to condition it on the final approval of the, the budget, the supplemental part, were you looking at the supplemental on the eighteenth, is that what you said?
Yeah.
Yeah.
To make that budget action.
Yeah, that makes sense, and I mean, I guess we, you know, there won't be any like actual payment required before then.
The grant will be available till July anyways, because it took them so long to do the reauthorization for the F A this year, so.
Okay, Stephanie, you wanted to?
I was planning on July second, doing a quarter two supplemental budget.
Oh, okay.
So it can just be a part of that, if, if you, if that's okay, and you know.
Yeah, and the, I will say, I have, I have some funding at the airport allocated for other things I haven't done yet. So if it comes down to it, I can't, the budget money around too.
Can cover it out, okay.
Well, then I, I mean, I'm just, I'm just trying not to get you three weeks. Well, then I, I mean, I'm just, I'm just trying not to get you three weeks behind that.
Yeah.
Sounds like a big deal, so I I would, sorry, go ahead, Josh.
No, I know, I I appreciate if we could get this going cuz that helps the the contractor get schedule going and we can really go get planning on uh knocking this out, um. Uh sooner rather than later, so.
Yeah, that that makes sense to me.
Cuz the airport will be closed um for a few days during that pavement, um.
Yeah.
For the runway pavement maintenance, so I'd like to get that out as soon as I can, that that we're gonna have a closure at the airport.
Great. That 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 make, that all makes sense to me and I'm comfortable with that.
So let's, so let's, should I move to approve the award, oh geez. American Road Maintenance.
Yeah.
Uh, I want to approve uh American Road Maintenance, um, our airport project award, um. Triggering, implementing all new schedules, uh, which the fifty-two thousand dollars. Three seven thousand dollars and twenty-five cents, which we're paying back to the general fund, the airport fund.
Yeah, okay, uh, I will second. Um, and just add, I I I think we were all okay waiting then, um, with that understanding, waiting for the. Uh, scheduled July second, uh, budget supplemental, we don't have to add it, add this as its own agenda item on an earlier. Regular meeting.
Okay, but I but but not, but I don't want, I I wasn't intending the approval to be conditioned on the chance to buy a second supplemental.
Agreed, and I I was just noting when the budget supplemental would happen, cuz there had been some discussion on that, but not not conditioning it on that.
Okay. Great, no further questions from me.
None from me, I'll call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye, uh, so that award to American Road Maintenance for all three schedules is approved.
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Good luck scheduling that.
Should be good, keep it, keep us, keep our runway looking nice for many years.
Yeah, okay, um. Agenda item number twelve, discussion and consideration of a P S A with Employee and Labor Relations Academy for mediation services. For the Intergovernmental Oversight Agency or I O G for the modification of their bylaws. Uh, Gloria.
She's there.
Oh, great.
Hi, everyone.
Thank you, uh Gloria, yeah, you have the floor.
Yes, um, thank you, so this um is a request to approve this um professional services agreement with this vendor. Um, this vendor was recommended to us um by the State Collaborative Management Program. Um, and it's to um contract for some facilitation and mediation services for. Uh revising the bylaws and um policies around um conflict of interest. Um, there was specifically a challenge that was brought up last year uh from one of the partners. In terms of um, you know, policies related to to the I O G and conflict, um, so the I O G. The full I O G has, you know, been in the loop and has addressed this through its meeting and um. Has followed the like recommended um protocol and what's written in our bylaws and this is the the last step that everyone. Agreed to to contract with um a professional to to revise those bylaws, um, we have a subcommittee in place. That will be working with this um vendor to um make recommendations um for their changes of the bylaws and the. Um policies within our memorandum of understanding. Um, so the funding exists within our collaborative management program budget, um, which again, the the I O G has approved. Um, the funding um to contract with this vendor.
Great, um, okay, thanks, I had one, just one comment, I did not see a not to exceed. Phrase in there, like it has an estimated budget, but we try to, I I feel like this is general practice, we try to have that not to exceed. Uh, I mean, this is a pretty small amount of money, so I don't wanna tie things up if we're trying to get that going faster. So I I I guess the question to Gloria or Chris is, could we, like, wa- was that raised?
I I I does, this is not a contact, so I'm not sure what materials um were reviewed, the proposals should be in the packet.
Yeah. Yeah. This is, the proposal's in the packet and it 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 again, as I said, I I I did, I did look over this and it it has, it says estimated project cost.
Right.
Um, and and it's, you know, it's from two to three thousand dollars, it's really, I mean, I I don't feel like being a stickler on it for this one, if.
Okay.
Um.
I think it might also depend on the group. Um, I don't know Gloria, do you, I mean, I.
Yeah, I think what probably makes sense, um, I would feel comfortable with not going over five thousand if that makes sense. Um, you know, just to give us a little wiggle room for in case there's like another session that is not. You know, included in this um current scope and that we have to go back for some reason. Um, and do like an extra session or something like that, and we can just have that flexibility to extend it a little bit. Um, but I would be fine if it goes over that amount, um, if you know, if the group. Sees that we're not getting to where we need to get, I would be comfortable coming back to the B O C C if we um need to increase that amount.
Yeah, and and Gloria, is it gonna, is it gonna hold up the work of the I O G and this contractor's work if we. Sort of ask to quickly go back or or?
We can just approve any legal review if you you like, and we can go on and just say that we want to add this provision to it.
Condition it. Yeah, like. Yeah.
Yeah, that would be great, um, if we can, you know, move forward with it, um, because we have had the subcommittee. Um, waiting and as it stands, we did have to, um, we'll we'll have to do these revisions of the bylaws already past um our M O U. Signature time, so we're actually gonna have to come back and um do an amendment of our M O U and get signatures from everyone once those bylaws are. Revised, um, which is okay, but um, yeah, I I I would want the committee to move forward as soon as possible with with, um, you know, starting this.
Great, then then I'll look for a motion to approve the P S A with Employee and Labor Relations Academy. For mediation services with the I O G for modification of the bylaws, but pending legal review, um, specifically to request the not to exceed five thousand dollars. Uh, in the uh in the P S A.
I'll move.
Second?
No further questions.
Great, uh, call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye, uh, so that P S A with Employee Labor Relations Academy is approved, uh, with the stipulation in uh the legal review.
Thank you.
Great, thanks Gloria.
Thank you, Gloria.
Uh, thanks for moving that process forward.
Thank you.
Um, agenda item number thirteen, discussion and consideration of a P S A with B C Consulting, Inc. for I T services for election continuity, uh, Chrissy.
Thank you, um, this is kind of asking for. Emergency intervention in the case of um. I T hardware going down, um. For example, over Memorial Day weekend, we lost a camera and nobody was available to come in and fix it. We are required by the state. Um, forty-five days prior to an election to have twenty-four-seven cameras.
Hmm.
Being recorded um on four different cameras. Um, and I know that we're losing our I T person and potentially may have a new person coming in. But even so, it's just one person and they may not be available when we need them to, for example, um. This coming election on June twenty-fifth. We will be, the V S P C, the polling will be open on June nineteenth, which is a county holiday. So I have to have somebody available if something goes down and um. So like I said, it was just kind of an emergency.
Yeah.
My biggest concern is November election and having somebody available.
For sure, yeah, I get, so I didn't, I I I I I guess the the question I have, and I'm not an I T expert at all, is just how that works to have a. Another firm sort of have access to our hardware and software, I just maybe wanna talk to you about a little bit more.
Well, he is election judge and he has been background checked by our sheriff's house.
I I I'm, I, yeah, I, yeah, sorry to be clear, I'm not, it's more just sort of like, I I feel like there need. For for there to be two different firms, it it it's not, it's not questioning the credentials of the proposed person or or firm. It's just sort of, I feel like I I'd I'd like to request or see if there's been, but request a little bit more discussion about how having two firms have access to do like software updates. That seems like a bit of a recipe for for to start dynamic.
I'm not looking for software updates, I'm looking for more, making sure that the hardware is working, um.
Yeah, I get, so, well, I guess on that, I mean, it like the statement of work from B C Consulting specifically says software and hardware updates, so that. I guess that just makes me nervous to have two people fiddling in the same thing, um, I guess if it's a, and and I gotta totally get the need for that, like twenty-four-seven. Short, short, you know, immediate availability of support, I guess I I'm just wondering if that's something. We can either, I mean, either try to get on call internally and just beef up what we have or. Just talk with with Applied Tech, our current I T folks and ask, I mean, is there a way to beef up? I I I guess I'd rather have like one.
I'm not trying to.
Yeah, yeah, no.
Say anything about Applied Tech, but last year, we had an outage in our office.
Yeah.
They said they couldn't be on site for three days and they couldn't fix it remotely. And we actually had a recording vendor come up and troubleshoot for them to, so, you know.
Yeah. I I totally.
They were not local, that's the problem.
Yeah, I mean, I told, so I told, and I I mean, I totally agree with you that like, especially during that election period. You need that quicker turnaround, so I'm open to exploring that, again, I just wanna do it in a way. I it it just frankly, doesn't feel good to have two different vendors have access. To our system without a bit more discussion about who who has authority for what.
Would you realize we have a whole system separate from the county, right? There are all our election cameras and. Right, it's completely separate.
Well, I guess, like I said at the beginning, I'm not an I T expert, so I don't understand where the separate, where the, like, if it is a separate system that can be cleaved off. Liz, you wanted to?
Yeah, so I do think that we can, so there's like a menu, right, with Applied Tech?
Hmm.
And we have hand-holding light, I think there's really an option to increase the hand-holding, which may be a good avenue to explore. And then if we wanna add some additional services and pieces and parts to really meet your need and take care of everything that's going on. I do think we can explore that if folks are open to it and that might be a really good solution.
I I guess I don't understand what that means, hand-holding.
So, um, so what I mean by that, I. We have light support, so we have an onsite tech and then remote support through Applied Tech, so. That's my interpretation, light hand-holding, but we can augment what that support looks like for a period of time. Or we can revisit getting a certain department, different support, so there's a couple options that I think could be really nice to explore. Because they already know our software, they already have access and they can do remote, and I hear what you're saying, that they couldn't get a tech here for three days. But I think that we can change our service for this time to give that, to support the needs.
I I'm open to that, it's just remote doesn't work, so every time. That Applied Tech does a maintenance on your server, somebody have to physically go in and turn on my server.
Yeah.
Yeah, and and so that's the the light, right, and so when I'm saying, let's explore the option to see if we can get a human here once, twice a week. Or this on a call basis, because that is one of the options, we just aren't applying that yet, so it might be worth having that conversation. And then it might not, but some of the scope of work that is provided by B C C Consulting, um. Is work that Applied Tech has already done, so we might as well capitalize on the resource that we've already invested in if it's been a work, but if it's not, you're right.
Yeah, and.
Well, if you wanna table those, they have a discussion.
Is that okay and and uh, yeah, when, can I ask, when, when would you need, so the forty-five days, you need this.
We're in the forty-five days.
Okay, okay, so, so I'll commit on behalf of staff to have this discussion, like, I mean, like, a- as soon as we get on the phone with Applied Tech and see what their levels of service are.
Quickly.
And how to specify, hmm, sorry, um, yeah, like what's, what the systems are that, you know, both elections, would you put broader in your office too if that's needed? Um, cuz again, yeah, I don't understand what's on what server and all the things, um.
Tracy, is that a conversation that you'd like to know if you have Applied Tech, if you want a call with you or another?
Yeah.
Um, I think it should be all of us, I'm not clear on everything that they do, so.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, and again, we'll make that call happen as soon, as soon as humanly possible.
Soon as possible.
Yeah, um, yeah, I totally understand that forty-five day. Um, requirement, and again, this is an election year, so I I totally understand basically from now until. November results are in and certified.
And a little bit after that.
Yes, I I've, and certified or whatever, yeah, yeah, um. And and again, and maybe that, maybe for your systems, that's something that we explore, I mean, what what is that, I mean, if that just has to happen all through the whole year. Because, you know, yeah, you don't stop thinking about elections, November tenth.
Right.
Um, we can explore that, okay, well, thanks, thanks for the flexibility on tabling that for for a staff discussion and working with Applied Tech. That's um, that sounds great.
Just quick, I I appreciate all that conversation and 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 based on the conversations everyone has together, um. I would anticipate maybe a different scope coming from B C C Consulting and if that onsite. Uh, is deemed necessary and helpful, I totally understand that that frustration and that need, um. But yeah, I I just had some of the same questions on like the complete documentation provided to. Consulting company and what would actually be appropriate um in the scope as it's refined would be helpful.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you.
That all makes sense. Is that all good from staff, great, um, okay, uh, item number fourteen, discussion and consideration of a purchase order with F N F Construction, Inc. To replace the existing synthetic turf field with new turf at Community Park, Karen?
Yeah, um, so I think we've had these conversations with the turf um for a few years, we know that it's past its lifespan, I think. We're pretty lucky to have it have lasted for as long as it has, especially in the current climate we live in. Um, so we did put out an R F P a couple weeks ago, uh, we had a few different bids come back. Staff and I reviewed, um, and we did, um, choose to go with the F N F, um, company. Um, they are the company that actually did the original construction on the field, they've done some other work for us previously. Um, and in their current bid, um, they gave us a few different options, like we have the gravel on the outside that we would like to take away and, um. Replace that with turf or some sort of like concrete, um, barrier, just to kinda help preserve, cuz that gravel gets. Kinda nasty and all over the turf too, um, so yep, they gave us a couple different options, um. Adam did put in a supplemental budget request that was approved by B O C C, um, let me pull up exactly. So it looks like, um, we were approved for four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the field replacement. Um, obviously, our bid was well over that, um, but we are, um, exploring. exploring some other options on how to get some of that covered, um, through grants, um, I just had a conversation with Goal this morning to see if there's any way that they can help us, um, kinda subsidize that. I know Adam did go to the school district, um, just 'cause they use the field, um, a lot, but unfortunately, like, that's just not, um, gonna work out for this time, but, um, so yeah, that's kind of like the brief rundown, um, of.
Yeah, two, uh, two questions for me, one is, um, so yeah, I I was, you mentioned some of the add-ons to the base price, and I was wondering, were were you recommending any of those, or just what's in the base bid?
Um, so I mean, I think it would be great if we can get some of those add-ons on there, um, I don't think it's like I have to, but like
For the alternates, I guess, yeah.
if that's, if we've got the bid and the add-ons on there, if we can get that covered, I think that would probably best for the overall care of the facility.
So which ones, 'cause I, um, I I feel like in the, if I read it right, base bid, the turf spec, the, is what we had before and lasted pretty well.
Mm-hmm.
So we don't need the add alternate to go to, there there's like the add alternate for turf legion pro.
Right, right, I think as long as we get a two point two five, yeah.
The, then, okay.
But we do want some type of perimeter.
Okay, so that fifty one thousand add for the perimeter curb, yeah.
What is that perimeter curb, Karen?
What, can you say that again, Sarah?
Sorry, what what's the perimeter curb?
Yeah, so right now, the perimeter is like just gravel and it's really just gravel, so we'd like to get rid of that existing gravel and either replace it with like turf or or some type of, something that's not gonna like start to mix in on the turf.
Right, okay, so that's that, that's that scope of work, removing the gravel, that first add alternate?
Yeah.
Okay, and then the deductions, what is that, that?
So I think that would be if we chose, like the, if we chose a smaller inch turf, would be that deduction. So if we chose the two inch turf, it would be cheaper, um, and then if we wanted to like you reuse any existing rubber or things like that, um, which might be possible, I'm just not really sure, I think once we like I know that they've done walkthroughs of the field and stuff, um, but like, I don't know how much rubber we're actually able to salvage.
Oh, I got it, so so that deduction would be if we use it to avoid their disposal costs and fees or something?
Yeah, and if we were able to salvage and reuse any of the existing rubber that's already out there.
Oh, I got, oh, okay, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Not for the, for this project or for a different project?
For this project.
Okay.
One, I'm sorry, one thought too, I didn't have to explore, there is a secondary market for used turf that we might be able to recapture some of that cost instead of paying for them to haul it to the dump and dispose of it,
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
that we might be able to sell it as surplus.
Yeah, we actually have had locals ask us, so.
Ask for, yeah.
Oh, okay.
So there are a couple of options there, you know, we could put it on a public auction site, see what happens there. We can sell it to the community, um, we've also talked with Public Works for the dump fees, you know, there's possibility of waiving the dump fees, but it takes up a lot of room in our landfill.
Yeah.
Um, so there's some trade-ups there, and then the other, um, some other options as we work through funding for this, um, is the other RFP that Rick has out right now is for, um, repairing the tennis courts, we've had the RFP open for two months.
Couple weeks, no, just, no, maybe like three, well, I don't know, what's the date?
Four weeks.
Four weeks.
Four weeks, um, zero bids on that, that was eighty thousand dollars, I mean, do a failed bid there and reevaluate, um, tennis courts, where they where they live, um.
There's like maybe that needs to go back out as part of a bigger package next year or something, so it's more appealing to subs, is that kinda where you're thinking?
Yeah, yeah. We risk the creation of P B pickleball or P B tennis, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, um, I will say that my successor engaging with that.
Yes.
I will say that Karen and Fee have done a great job, at least from the pickleball side of, you know, setting up Sixth Street Gym for
Yeah.
pickleball and meeting that demand with what we have, um. So there's, I, there's options, hopefully Brian has some money and then Carrie will work at grants.
Yeah, um, and and, yeah, sorry, go ahead, Sarah.
I'm sorry, what, uh, Karen, you, did you say you would recommend the two and a quarter inch, rather than, what did we have on there before?
That's what we have on there currently, uh, but the, if we wanted to go a little bit cheaper route, they could do just the two inch. But, um, I think because we have, they were saying that one reason our turf has lasted so long is because we did the two and a quarter inch. And that's actually probably one of the safer routes too, because we do have football on there as well.
Right.
Yeah.
So.
For liability purposes and stuff, I would recommend going with the thinner, yeah.
Having played tackle sport on turf.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, what's the, what's the, um, what's the add turf legion, 'cause the two, two and a quarter inch is in the base bid, what's the, what's that add on?
I think that's just another type of like brand turf, so the turf momentum is what we have now, but if we wanted probably a little bit even more like upscale turf, we could go with the turf legion.
Okay.
If we wanted to get really fancy.
Okay, and then that, so the deduct, it depends on which one we use for that twenty seventy seven thousand dollar savings or not, and then the fifty seven thousand dollar savings, will they go about and figure out how much they can repurpose and we might get credited something in the ballpark of that fifty seven thousand dollar?
Right. Yeah.
Okay, thank you, so today, without without the full funding in place and all of the potential financing we explored, what are you asking us for today?
Um, so I think we'd just like to at least approve moving forward with the F N S company, um, and then figuring out how we're gonna, um, fund the other portion of that, working towards that funding.
So I think you can do a similar conditional approval, um, we have the the half of the funding, right, we can um, reevaluate some of the other supplemental budget requests that are in the rec replacement fund for this year, and some other funds, um, work on grant funding and possible, you know, Goal has funding available for this project, um, to get us, you know, close or at least really like within striking distance of it, and then it might, it would be a supplemental budget ask.
Yeah, and one other thought is, and I appreciate approaching the school district and being careful since I'm on the school board right now, not to say more than I should, but I mean, I think we had, we had talked with the rec department in the past about approaching them, I mean, there there could be some future discussion when the school district is in a different financial situation about some you know, contribution to upkeep that might, you know, help offset not being able to contribute now upfront, I mean, I see different options.
Mm-hmm.
And I guess, I mean, the only other option really is to like wait until next year, until, you know, we allocate, but I I mean, personally, I don't really see
So this, this.
the point of that, it's due for replacement, overdue for replacement.
Yeah, this.
Yeah.
In this bid you have here is ten percent higher than the bid we received last year, um, you said, you know, they said expired, so I I don't know
Yeah. Yeah.
how much more it would be next year, but add on another ten percent at least.
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah.
For sure.
Okay. Um, so approving the bid or engagement with F N F, F N F, um, conditioned on, um, about the funds remaining, that remain above the forty fifty thousand, we'll come back with the final. Who's the writer?
Yeah, and I think from there, um, Karen can work with F N F on the conditional approval. At least sketch out a timeline, sketch out some of those things, we can work, can, we'll continue to work on other funding options for this, um, but, or the board could say no and.
I I mean, my thing is we should move forward, certainly on that, I mean, I mean, yeah, conditional to making sure we have the full funds available, um, but I mean, I feel like, I I'm assuming we need to move pretty fast on this, or we're gonna miss the summer installation window.
Yep, um, we don't have like an exact, we didn't talk exact dates, but, um, yeah, it would definitely be nice
Yeah.
even, well, before the snow flies, let's just say that.
Yeah, 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 um, yeah.
Do we know when the fall sports start?
Um, fall sports start like mid to later August, um, so.
So, yeah, I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
Trying to get it done.
I mean, our sports can adapt as needed, um, but it's, you know, middle school, high school, that's real.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, and I also, I know from public discussions on the school board, I mean, they were hoping the Federico Field resurfacing was in part, like, being moved fast in anticipation that this, that the turf replacement might not be done in time for early season practice, so.
Yeah, any chance part of this turf can be repurposed with Federico for, since it's a practice facility?
I mean.
We could have those conversations and see a lot of order, you know, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, anything else with redoing it.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, he's like, yeah, I have that discussion, I can't imagine, once you tear something up, can't imagine.
I think it comes up in strips.
I think so.
They roll it in strips when they take it up.
Well.
That's why it's like there's a secondary market for, I know from experience that our local, um, animal uh, pet care facilities have used, have purchased surplus, 'cause they use it for a lot of animal runs and that type of thing, 'cause it's easier to maintain and clean than other other surfaces.
Yeah, we can, yeah, absolutely explore that, so. Um, and then Sarah, back to, back to what you listed, I think, just to make sure we add, I think we were, um, looking to approve that first add alternate of some kind of, you know, whatever, the, some appropriate perimeter curb that doesn't track onto the field.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Okay, um, all right, well, I'm I'll move, I mean, I do think this is, it's an incredible asset, it's a very important asset for all the, a lot of activities across districts, um, so I'll move to approve engagement with F N F, um, for the complete case bid and the first add alternate for the gravel curb replacement. Um, conditioned on, um, budget for the field and, um, remaining financing and funding.
Okay, I'll second.
Um, yeah, it would just be nice to know what, I think if F N F are gonna start doing something, is there like phasing where if we get nothing, you know, we don't find another four hundred, um, three hundred and fifty thousand, um. Please just keep us updated, I suppose, on what.
Yeah.
You're fine.
I'll keep you guys updated on, like, all the conversations on how we start to move forward, when, um, well, funding for one, but, um, once we get actual plans in place.
Okay, and then also moving, I mean, next, after this, um, let's have that conversation too come budget season on, uh, 'cause I don't, I don't remember, I don't know if we ever talked about any, I mean, we didn't necessarily maintain the field at any point, did we, so we should talk about routine maintenance, um, where we get to the next twelve years and complete replacement.
Yeah, no, and I think our maintenance team has done some routine maintenance, like they've got, we've got a machine where they go out and I don't know, drive around and move the rubber around or whatever you wanna call that, but definitely, I, and I think like, I'm sure like some of the technology has changed with certain things, so, once we do have new turf, I'm sure they will instruct us on like how to properly take care of it, um, I think we'll have those big discussions on, we usually remove the snow from the turf, is that even gonna be allowed, because on the school district turf, they are not allowed to put any heavy equipment because it voids the warranty, so I think we're just gonna have to make sure we're very diligent in what actually is part of the process, and like you said, how to take care of it and um, just continue to preserve it, 'cause it is, I mean, it's, it's a great asset, but it is, it's expensive, so
Yeah.
we just need to keep, make sure we're doing the best we can.
Yeah.
And Commissioner, that is part of ongoing work led by the finance team on asset management plan and then capital improvement plans to be in the twenty five budget.
Thank you, Karen.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Great, can we take just a couple minute break in our?
We have to vote.
Oh, sorry, thank you. Um, let us call for a vote on that motion on the table, which was, yeah, which which included again that first add alternate.
Aye.
Aye, uh, so that is approved, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
For for all that. Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Karen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Tracy.
Great, thanks.
Yep.
Um. So I'm just, uh. Uh, agenda item number fifteen, discussion and consideration of a PSA with diversity way, waymaker, uh, for diversity equity and inclusion training for Lake County staff.
Sure, so as we, uh, talked about in last week's work session, um, this would be, you know, countywide, but also leadership focused, um, DEI training for Lake County staff, this has been a couple of years in the making, but we're finally in a position where we can do this. This was budgeted for in the twenty twenty-four budget, um, for fifty thousand dollars, so for twenty twenty-four, um, so not to exceed amount of fifty thousand dollars. Um, I, I do think we will find, um, the, the training and the engagement worthwhile and thoughtful, but it will be up to the board uh, to decide if we want to continue that training and then any additional funding for the twenty twenty-five budget.
Okay. Agree, uh, I don't have any questions or comments, yeah, Sarah? Okay, um, I'll look for.
You're on me, sorry, Commissioner, you're on me.
Sorry, I don't have any, I don't have any questions.
Okay, uh, I'll look for a motion to approve the PSA with diversity waymaker for DEI training for Lake County staff.
I'm on.
Second, uh, I think no further questions or comments, so call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye, uh, that PSA with diversity waymaker is approved.
Thank you.
Thanks for moving that forward. Great, um, agenda item number sixteen, discussion and consideration of the ratification of an amendment to the existing PSA with Bridge to Home for additional interstate compact on the placement of children monthly services.
Hello, Commissioners, Tara Rome here with Lake County Department of Human Services Child Welfare, and I am here to talk about my request, um. We have the completed home study, uh, that we have the original contract for, and so now this addendum is for ongoing monthly supervision of the child in the home here in Leadville and ongoing certification of that foster home in Leadville, um. Our agency contracts out with a child placing agency and Bridge to Home is graciously working with us. They are in Montrose, they will not be charging us, um, travel.
Wow, great.
It is in the daily rate expense, um, which is sixty dollars and fifty-seven cents, and I gave the figures for a minimum, uh, monthly uh, payment, which would be sixteen ninety-five, ninety-six, or, um, for thirty day is eighteen seventeen and ten cents, and for a thirty-one day month, it is eighteen seventy-seven and sixty-seven cents. This will go on approximately for six months until January, and then at that time, I may be back in front of you to ask for, uh, an adoption home study and adoption purposes, uh, if, if the placement of the child were to remain with, uh, the family members here and the parent in New Jersey did not, um, complete the tasks that they are required to do by their court. So this is a great opportunity for our, um, Child Welfare Department to have a agency that is willing to work with us, because a lot of times, uh, you know, on the front ranges where most of the service providers are and they they will charge for travel, um, or they just won't come service our area, so really glad to have found Bridge to Home, and so I just request that you make a decision on that.
Yeah. Yeah. And, and sorry, the, those different, those different days per month, that, that's just specifying, because diff- different months have different days.
Yep.
So, okay, that, we, you know, we don't have to pick one of those.
No, no, I wish we could, but no, it's just based on a daily rate.
Yeah, no, I did, yeah. Great, okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood that properly. Um, I didn't have any further questions, Sarah, it's like, so no, I think we're, I think we're good, so I'll, um, thanks for make, moving this forward, um, and thanks to Bridge to Home, um, so I'll look for, uh, a motion to approve the amendment to the PSA with Bridge to Home for additional ICPC monthly services.
I'm on.
Second, I think no further comments or questions, so call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye, uh, so that amendment to the PSA with Bridge to Home, uh, is approved as laid out in the packet, thank you so much.
I think you gave Commissioners to help move this forward quickly, and I appreciate that.
Great, thank you. Um, number seventeen, discussion and consideration of the ratification of the twenty twenty-four Fortinet renewal for firewall licensing for Lake County government. Please.
Hi, so this is for a twenty twenty-four Fortinet renewal, this is an unbudgeted expense, but we do need a firewall at Lake County for data security and moving internet traffic back and forth. So our subscription had last and lapsed, and we worked with Applied Tech, they got it restored within twenty-four hours. Um, I was really impressed with the intentiveness that we received in this, uh, five minutes of crisis, where I was like, oh, Lord, I broke the internet. Um, so this is the renewal, we've made steps so that this renewal does not lapse again, we've added it to our Applied Tech package of renewals. In Lakewise, now I am one of the users that gets renewal information as well as we're gonna have IT at Lake County, so regardless of people,
Yeah.
that inbox will always have renewals.
Great, and tha- and that's an ad, that'll be an annual subscription.
Until the end of time.
Till the end of time, great. Uh, that's all done.
It really is.
Cool, uh, yeah, I don't have any further questions.
Uh, any further questions?
Okay, then I'll look for a motion to, um, approve or ratify the twenty twenty-four Fortinet renewal for firewall licensing for Lake County government.
I'm on.
I'll second, I think no further questions, so call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye, uh, the Fortinet renewal is approved. Thank you for dealing with that. Um, and yeah, and, and again, appreciate getting that set up, so, um, we won't hit that snag again. Okay. Second, agenda item number eighteen, discussion and consideration of the augmentation water supply agreement for the twenty twenty-four water year between the Lake County Board of Commissioners and Mount Massive Golf Club Inc. press.
Yes, and apologies from Bryce, our Lake County Water Resource Program Manager, who's not able to be here today, but, um, this is the annual lease that the county has asked to approve, um, Mount Massive golf courses historically use a significant portion of Lake County's available water for course irrigation. Um, they're in need of a renewed water lease to submit to Colorado Division of Water Resources Division Two Engineers Office for approval, so they can actually begin irrigating the course for this season, um, the proposed, uh, lease, uh, that is in the packet has been, um, reviewed and changes proposed by Bryce, it has also been vetted by the County Attorney's Office, and it's very similar in cost and scope to last year's lease for this year, um, Mount Massive Golf Course will use the Dairy Ditch number three water when it's available, and will also have access to five acre feet of Lake County's available Aurora IGA water with the option to lease five additional acre feet in one foot increments if needed. Um, Bryce advises that, you know, anticipates next year's lease will be substantially different because of the planned implementation of Lake County's Water Projects Enterprise, and he has already opened lines of communication with the Mount Massive, uh, golf course staff and board, I mean, anticipation of that, so at this point, we would recommend the renewal of the lease, um, as presented.
Great. Yeah, and if I understood in that, you know, I think it was called out, the next year, and is, is that in anticipation of the enterprise being in place?
The enterprise and potentially other policies that the county might adapt as to water use and what the priorities will be and that type of thing, and so he's, he's been proactive in opening those conversations already, so we're not next year and at the eleventh hour having to negotiate with Mount Massive, uh, golf course, so that they will
Yeah.
be prepared for any changes that may come down, down pipe on this.
Yeah. Sarah?
Yeah, if I could just know, uh, the pricing is a little bit different, I think a little bit less, um, because over the last couple of years of, uh, renegotiating leads, uh, we've come to learn that the golf course can rely heavily, uh, if not, uh, primarily on the Dairy Three water, which is, um, more affordable than the, um, um, allotted Aurora water, uh, and so we kind of moved the payments for, uh, in anticipation of that primary use of that direct flow, um. And so the pricing was just a little bit different this year upon request of Mount Massive Golf Course.
Okay. No, I, I don't have any further questions, I think I can call for a, uh, or look for a motion um, to approve the augmentation water supply agreement for the twenty twenty-four water year uh, between, uh, Lake County Board of Commissioners, um, and Mount Massive Golf Club.
I'm on.
I'll second, any further?
No.
Questions, okay, great, uh, call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye, uh, so the augmentation water supply agreement is approved. Um, is Julia here, did someone else cover?
You know, they're on, they're at training, and so.
They are, I messaged Melissa, but.
Well, that's, yeah, and it, I, I had texted her too to see if she wanted to come for that, um.
I mean, you looked pretty straightforward.
It, it is, and this is, it, it's, you know, for emergent situation, but that, but for this one though, this is the first one, this is to store the vaccines for a program that's
Yeah, yeah.
uh, scheduled vaccine, um, clinic or whatever, or for June eleventh, just to have the, um, have the ability to store.
Yeah.
Then they use to store vaccines with, uh, public health, I think there's another one on here, but, um, was there another one on here for?
I believe it's just for the one day on the eleventh to store the vaccines.
The vaccines, yeah, we did, the emergency one, was that, no, that's, okay.
Yeah, that was, yeah, yeah.
That's the other one.
So, yeah, I think this is, this is straightforward, very simple, and something we wanna support since they're bringing all their vaccines to Lake County to do, so.
Yeah. I'm comfortable moving forward, yeah, yeah, I mean, and the background material is clear. Um, Sarah, do you have any questions or comments before moving, looking for a motion, so I'll look for a motion, uh, to approve the MOU between disease control and public health response and Lake County Public Health for vaccine refrigeration on June eleventh, twenty twenty-four.
I'm on.
I'll second, uh, I think, good, we, if there's some comments, so call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye, uh, so that, uh, memorandum of agreement between disease control and public health response and Lake County Public Health for vaccine refrigeration on June eleventh is approved. Great, thanks. Um, agenda item number twenty, discussion and consideration of a transfer of, uh, twenty thousand dollars in Rio Blanco County, uh, Tana funds, uh, to Lake County. And Janine, you have the floor.
Yeah, so Rio Blanco County has very graciously offered to sell us twenty thousand dollars in Tana funds. Um, if you'll recall, Taro County, uh, sold us fifty thousand dollars, so this will help supplement our Tana funding for the extra projects that we've done this year in Lake County. Any questions on it?
None for me.
Nothing.
Yeah, so, um, look for a motion to approve, um, the transfer of, uh, twenty thousand dollars, uh, in Tana funds from Rio Blanco County to Lake County.
I'm on.
I'll second, I think we're all good on questions, so call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye, uh, so that transfer, uh, Tana funds is approved, thank you. Um, twenty-one, we polled, um, uh, so agenda item twenty-two, discussion and consideration of building fee waivers, uh, for a Chafee, Chafee Housing Trust in Lake County. Tim, you're on this one?
Sure, so, um, the city in the county have an IGA, um, around, you know, building permits, uh, site inspections, uh, building fees, anyway, all of that, um, so part of that contract is that, so when you, when you apply or, you know, pay a building fee, twenty-five percent of that goes to Lake County Government, to community planning and development, and the remainder, that seventy-five percent is passed along to our, uh, vendor, Shum's Coda, um, who assists, you know, with, um, with site plans, uh, blueprint reviews, license checks, all that kind of stuff, um. So as we've discussed, um, in the past and part of, you know, some of the qualifying activities we've done for DOLA and other, other funding amounts, you know, for our dedication for affordable housing, um, one part of that was, um, you know, potential ways to have building fee waivers, um, for affordable housing. So the Chafee Housing Trust is working with the City of Leadville on the LURA or Leadville Urban Renewal Authority parcel, um, in the rail yards, um, so Chafee Housing Trust is moving forward, um, with that project, um, the community, Lake County Community Planning and Development has estimated that, um, these building fees, um, would amount to about ten thousand dollars. So we are requesting a building fee waiver, um, from the board, the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars, uh, for the Chafee Housing Trust for this affordable housing project, and Community Planning and Development Director is working with Shum's Coda, if they have any discounts or ways, um, to either maybe not fully waive, since they're a business, um, any ways to, um, work on that as well, but so the request before you today is to um, waive that, uh, twenty-five hundred dollars.
And that ten, that ten thousand estimate is, that's not per unit, that's a total for the whole project, is it, that's the series of townhomes, right?
Yeah, total for the whole project.
Okay. Um, I, I just have one comment on this, um, I, I don't mean to be petty. Well, I, I, I guess one question for staff to think about while I make my comment is, i- i- it, this wasn't a budgeted item, do, do you have a recommendation for what budget line item this could come out of, and while you think about the answer to that, I'll just make the comment that I, again, I don't wanna be petty over two thousand five hundred towards supporting affordable housing, I greatly appreciate that the city and Chafee Housing Trust are moving forward and getting this project built, um, this is a city project, so I find it slightly aggravating that they would come to the county to waive the twenty-five hundred, um, I'm happy to support that for affordable housing in this community, um, but I will relay that to the mayor, um, about that.
Uh, yes, in terms of where this would come from, um, this would be part of the community planning and development budget, uh, and some somewhere up there.
Okay, great, okay.
Where that can be covered, um, but, and we will work with, uh, Deputy County Attorney Born on some kind of policy, excuse me, um, going forward on what these kind of things look like, right, knowing that our ultimate end goal is that community planning and development is able to, um, hire the staff, you know, that you've approved, so that we can end the contract with Shum's Coda and realize that full cost and those full cost recovery for the county.
And, and would that include, I, I maybe rather than have to come to get approval for waiving, maybe we could, like, approve a policy going forwards and with a different fee schedule for affordable housing projects, is that what you were?
Yes.
Excellent.
Yes.
That'd be great.
Yes.
Um.
I appreciate the comment, Jeff.
Okay, thank you, um, uh, great, maybe Tim and, and, I mean, another staff involved, when you work through that sort of, you know, new fee schedule and how to address that, may, maybe you could reach out to the city and, um, relay my comment to them.
Gladly.
All right. Do we know, do we know, is the Housing Trust asking the city to cover the rest of the fee to Shum's Coda, or what is the city's proposal, if there is any, it doesn't really sound like there's been that conversation.
Uh, no, we did reach out to the city administrator and to their planning director, um, I believe, I, they have the authority to make administrative decisions on this, and we're okay with, yes, coming to the Board of County Commissioners to ask for the fee waiver, um, however, the underlying IGA, um, you know, part of that is Shum's Coda, so I am not sure if the city or the Chafee Housing Trust have gotten that, that far, uh, in their thinking, uh, to be honest.
Oh.
So more to come on that.
Okay. Um, great.
Okay. Um, I'll look for a motion to, um, approve the fee waiver, uh, of the two thousand five hundred dollar portion uh, for the Chafee Housing Trust, uh, application.
So moved.
I'll second.
No further discussion.
Great, I'll call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye, um. So, uh, so, uh, that fee waiver is approved, and thank you for working, um, on, um, on the efforts that you mentioned. That is great. Okay, uh, we had pulled the executive session, so moving on to agenda item twenty-four, discussion and consideration of an IGA for law enforcement services between Lake County Sheriff's Office, um, and the City of Leadville, um.
Yes, um, we, sorry, Sheriff, we, um, uh, struck the executive session because we had the wrong language on there, however, talked with the commissioners, um, you know, they have the full background on everything, and, and anyway, we'll take a review.
Yeah, I could, I could do a quick review.
Yeah.
I don't wanna be repetitive, but, um, yeah, we had a mi- uh, mutual aid agreement in place, and in review of that, we found that the, uh, the help was not so mutual anymore, and so we started working on an, an IGA to offer the city assistance for coverage of their, their vacancies. Um, we started this discussion, um, back in November.
Actually, October.
October, okay, so, um, so it's, it's quite old at this point, there's been a lot of, um, of discussion and negotiation back and forth, which has led us to this point now where we have a document, um, that we both, uh, the, my, my office and the city agree on, we're looking for your approval. Um, also, and, um, I can go through a couple of the items that I thought were important on the IGA to, to bring up. And, um, so it's, it's really starting with paragraph one, which is describing what those services are, um, and it will be on an as-needed, as-requested basis by the city, uh, for coverage, uh, the city for the goal of achieving twenty-four seven coverage, seven days a week. Um, it's also, uh, it's important that I bring up that it's impossible, as defined in this agreement, so we're not obligated to fulfill those shift coverages if we're not able to. Um, it will be dedicated service for the city, uh, it's not just offering, uh, backup or call, or respond to calls, um, it is to be dedicated, um, just as if it was a city police officer on duty. Um, we will, um, supply and furnish all personnel facilities, equipment, resources, materials over to administration, and, um, and any, any other support necessary to execute those duties, and, uh, enforcement will still be with, uh, for Colorado by statute, all Lake County ordinance, Colorado traffic code, and also adding now the Leadville City Municipal Code. Um, and then there's the, it removes, uh, enforcing building codes, zoning codes, fire code, plumbing codes, electrical codes. And that all violations of Leadville Municipal Code, uh, will be written into the municipal court, and that will make our deputies available to. Um, we'll also have real-time access to their schedule, and we'll have the ability to provide input and review of their scheduling, um, so we can work on making sure that those shifts coverage is, uh, as best as possible. Um, the effective dates will be, um, once this agreement's in effect, and then we'll expire at the end of this year for the initial term. Um, there's also, paragraph three B brings up a transition plan, um, and that will be mutually agreed on with all the parties if there, uh, is a termination of this agreement. And then what we spent most of our time on is paragraph four, which is the compensation portion, um, and where we land was, if, if they set hourly rate, uh, not to exceed eighty thousand dollars, will be billed monthly, the hourly rate's a hundred and fifty dollars, um, for every hour of service with a minimum of two hours, and then a seventy-five dollars an hour for our evidence technician. And, and then there's also the right then of, uh, to follow our county handbook, if there's a request for service within the twenty-four hour window, that we will, charge also the thirty dollars an hour for the on-call pay during weekdays, sixty during the weekend, and a hundred for holidays. This will be a monthly invoice to the city from our office, um, with a net thirty days due, and um, this acknowledges also that there's still the mutual aid agreement in place, and that we're not charging for your mutual aid, but this is purely for requested service, uh, for those hours. We also are able to identify the, um, got this covered, since it's provided by Colorado, both certified and fully filled-trained officers, um, so we have the correct people in those positions to enforce the law. Um, there's some quarterly reporting requirements for both you guys, uh, to the board, and also to the city, which we're happy to provide in our overall goal of good transparent communication, um, so that's no hidden issue, and look forward to it for. And as I mentioned before, uh, paragraph eight is that we are taking all of the responses, our responsibility for all costs related to the performance of those duties outside the hundred and fifty dollars an hour. And then as for the citations, it also brings up that the city municipal court clerk and other assigned city staff will continue to process municipal, um, citations. Those were the key points that I wanted to bring up. And then you've got Reddit, you did, and just wanted to go over some of those, uh, for pretty important questions.
Yeah, um. Yeah, I, it was okay, Sarah, I'll start, um. Yeah, I appreciate all the work that you, Chris, you know, and others have put into negotiating this with the city, um. I, I guess, one, first comment, um, and, and we, we, we've talked about this, Sheriff, and, and, you know, I completely have faith in you looking out for your staff, I just wanna, it's not laid out in the IGA, but I just really wanna encourage you to look out for your staff in this, you know, it's extra shifts, um, you know, we're, we're, we can be short-staffed, just, you know, a- anything you can do to, yeah, pro- protect the morale and burnout of your staff in fulfilling the terms, and I think, you know, there's some word, there's some little words in here that give you that ability, um, you know, again, we talked about that, so again, have complete faith in you looking out for your staff, I just wanna sort of reiterate that, that you, that you protect your staff here, and then I think a comment directed to the city, a couple of comments directed to the city, um, three things, I guess, first, extremely disappointing that no one from the city is even here, um. Second, I think that almost speaks to what I perceive is just like a, a lack of attention and seriousness to this issue, um. I find it really disappointing how long it has taken them to move forward on hiring a police chief, um, I think it's been over a year since the interim Chief Chavez joined. I, I just, I, I just don't understand how it can take the city so long, and I'm sorry, I'm like speaking to city people who aren't here, not to anyone in this room, but, um, I, I just find it really troubling that they don't have a chief, I don't see how you can rebuild a police department without a chief in place, um. And, you know, I ju- and then just a third point, you know, I feel like the city, I, I totally respect their city council's desire to retain, you know, and rebuild and staff their police department, that is their choice, but I just feel like they're imposing on the county, um, in this what is gonna end up being like a two-year interim period, they are imposing on us, um, and, and I just don't feel like they have engaged really in good faith on this, um. So again, sorry to pontificate to people who aren't here, um. I will relay that again to city council and the mayor, um, uh, those feelings, um. Uh, and we'll work with fellow commissioners on steps forward to make sure that we continue to try to get the city to move, move faster on this. Um, so again, I was, sorry to pontificate, when you and Chris and others have put a lot of work into, into fixing this, and I know uh, that you've done that, so none of that was directed at you, so, uh, that is my soapbox over, Commissioner Mize, do you have anything else to add?
I do, I really appreciate those comments, Jeff, um, I'm sorry, I have my video off now, I had to move out of the room, I was in, can y'all hear me okay?
Yeah, you're great.
Okay, um. Sheriff, thank you for going over all of those points, that's really helpful, because I started to get really worried after our CTSI presentation on increased liabilities, um, especially, especially kind of combined with, uh, me and, and probably the rest of the community not really being super clear as to what the city's, um, approach or policy was, I know, I think they've said a couple times in public meetings that they aren't required to provide twenty-four seven service, and, um, uh, I, I think your overview of, well, I do have a question for you, but I think your overview of responding as needed, as requested, is helpful, and I'm curious if you can kind of go into how, well, really, how the last month of May, with their twenty-six vacant or, uh, unscheduled shifts went for the sheriff's office in coverage, um, how you plan to use discretion responding as requested, and what that request looks like, whether that comes from a police officer on the ground, or the mayor, or administration?
Yeah, I'll talk on that. Um, part of the IGA does bring up the, uh, a monthly meeting to go over the next month's schedule, so we have some advance notice of what's expected over there, um, the IGA also drives out that it's the cities that, uh, takes first responsibility for making sure those shifts are covered from an overtime standpoint, um, so puts the notice on them to make sure that, you know, from overtime and additional shifts, it's the city's primary responsibility uh, to achieve the goal of twenty-four seven coverage, and if they cannot find that coverage, then it's a request to us. Um, internally, I wanted to have that ability to manage, um, how we're using our staff for that, and that's part of the discussion that I have with supervision for status check on staff, to Jeff's point about making sure that we're not overworking just because we have a lot of opportunities, um, that it is limited, um, to, to each employee, what, how often they can, uh, take these overtime shifts, um, it's important that, you know, just, just because of the nature of the work that, um, I'm not burning people out, not just for longevity, but also for decision-making each time, so we take that into consideration to see where people are at. Um, you know, so there's a lot of moving parts, of course, to determine that, but that's why I wanted it to be, uh, like an in, in-house policy to approach how we do that with consideration of, uh, supervision. Uh, yeah, for, to talk on the month of May a little bit, we didn't have an agreement in place, um, you know, we, we got through that, um, by offering any sort of period where there was no coverage from the city, and we only had one deputy on for both the city and the county, uh, for, for all that time, we offered overtime to staff to cover those two to twelve-hour windows, um, just for our own officer safety and our service to the community, um, including the county. Um, I didn't wanna see a deputy that was, uh, the only one that was on, get stuck up a city call, and then we had a county call facility available, um, so we worked through that, um, internally through overtime, um, not, not ideal, um, but we were able to get, uh, for the most part, coverage. Um, we do have one of our, uh, new hires who's graduating FTO next week, so that will spread some of that overtime out a little bit, um, going into this month, um. So, be, to kind of go back to your other question about how we're gonna deal with this with the monthly meetings, um, we'll, we'll be able to identify those, um, those vacancies, uh, hopefully a month in advance, um. And then as for the specific request, I'm actually not sure if that has to come from any individual person, Chris, maybe do you know if that has to come from Lori, or is it, it's just by request of the city?
I, I think it's just, it's the city administrator or her designated, which.
So the police chief included in that?
The police, I would say, the, yeah, police chief.
Yeah. Um, so we would have to clarify if they're gonna put a designated to that, or if I can just go to Dan Brier, um, who's been available by phone, uh, for any of my questions, so we'd have to work out to see exactly who that person's gonna be, but the scheduling, I work with Sergeant Ortega on, he's the one that controls the schedule, um, and, uh, interim chief Brier's given me direction on the scheduling to speak directly to Sergeant Ortega, since he's on the ground every day and knows what's going on. So, Sarah, does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you so much, that, that is helpful, and so it, it sounds like, um, I think it's worth repeating that, uh, I, I do hope that you'll get that schedule, even though that was not, that was, that's been hard to obtain until this point, as I understand it, from the city, and I hope that'll help you, um, minimize the impact on your office, um, I, I sorry, I don't know how, I just, I just, uh, yeah, I'm trying, I'm trying to just emphasize that, eh, I know it's within most of our fiber to, to respond as public servants, especially in these kind of scenarios, um, but I, I, I hope that you'll, I know you'll use, um, your best judgment to, to respond, and, uh, I do hope that those conversations with the ci- the city on a monthly basis will kind of yield some better planning for twenty twenty-five. Do you have any idea of what you think that might look like, and, I mean, I imagine in maybe three, four months' time, we'll wanna kind of sit down and dig into what those four months of experience have shown you for a twenty twenty-five plan?
Yes, yeah, I, I don't know, to be honest, it's, I think it's twenty twenty-five's kind of hard to predict right now, um. You know, they happen to do have a new hire, they're, they're finally making their push for the police chief, um. I feel like they hired a pretty legitimate company to, to seek that position out, um, so, a lot of it is, it, it depends on how that moves. So the prediction would be, you know, chief or not, really, I think without a chief, like, like it was said, is how, you know, how you build an agency without somebody leading it or giving vision to it, you know, with these first without that in place, then twenty-five looks similar to twenty-four, um, if they're able to hire that sooner than later, and maybe there's some steps towards growing in twenty-five, then there's less of a service need for us to help the city out, um, so, I guess I don't have a great answer for that, that I'm confident in.
No. Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think we'll just, uh, have to learn as we go, month to month, and see where the, if the city kind of gets up to speed on how severe the situation is. Thank you.
And, I, I had one final question, just, um, so, there's the, kind of not to exceed eighty thousand dollars, and I was just doing some quick math, I mean, that's like forty shifts, forty twelve-hour shifts, so, that's gonna expire in two months?
Yeah, that's not considering any sort of.
Or expires is the wrong word, but like, you know, we're gonna hit that.
Yeah, yeah.
Ex- probably consumed within the time period, and that was a lot of the discussion we had with the city in anticipating with that, and one of, there's a provision in there that says if it appears that that cap will be met, that the parties will meet to negotiate an extension, or that they will consider an extension, because that was one of my concerns too, especially given the first quarter, um, of the mutual aid, or non-mutual aid that was provided by the sheriff's office this year, the, the tab for that was thirty-eight thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, if you kind of.
You build them for, correct, yeah, we go for most of the first quarter, we we went halfway April at the time, so, um, so the initial bill was set, um, as far as I'm aware, we haven't received payment on that yet, I'll send another bill to lead us up to the effective date of this agreement, to follow the same pattern, but, yeah, there is, uh, it does mention it here that they would consider an amendment.
So, that amendment would need to be approved by city council and the P O C C, so I would request a staff that we get on city council's agenda for whatever meeting you think would be appropriate.
Yeah, and that's what he did, I think the sheriff is planning, he'd be tracking to see if it looks like, okay, based on sort of what he's seeing each month, that we're gonna run out of that eighty K by October, November, or whatever it ends up being, that's when we initiate the communications with the city.
Yeah, I mean, again, I, I'm not trying to be petty, but I, I feel like we should request to get on that agenda essentially now.
Yeah, or request that in the langu- it, does it have a turnaround time in the language? Yeah, or request that in the language, does it have a turnaround time in the language of the IGA? Do you think that's something reasonable?
It, it's not, I mean, and I think there are provisions in there in terms of making this, you know, all provisions of this, you know, tons of the essence of this. And, and the one thing to keep in mind too, is if the city doesn't cooperate, it's not just the city's ability to terminate the county, can't do. So if this ends up that they aren't cooperating and they're not complying with the terms, then as I've expressed to sheriff, there could be some tough love here to essentially say, if we're gonna terminate this, then essentially the city's gonna have to cover its own responsibilities.
Yeah, okay.
Um, I, I would also just, if we haven't, I know, if we need some more folks in the conversation to assist, Dana Foley might be helpful with CTSI and his counterpart at SIRSa. Let's not forget about those resources to join the conversations where it might be appropriate.
Yeah. Yeah.
And did you say, sorry, did you say we, we already invoiced for the thirty-eight thousand dollars out of the eighty for the first quarter?
That's correct. Under the existing IGA, not It was based off of just their request in the meeting. Yeah, there was no agreement in place.
Yeah, okay, so that doesn't count towards the eighty K already?
No, no.
Yeah, we, we top it up specifically and this is for going, that eighty K is, as soon, when it's executed, it does cover the prior part of the year.
Okay.
Sarah, any other questions or comments before we make a motion?
No, thank you.
Okay. Then I'll look for a motion to approve the IGA for law enforcement services between Lake County Sheriff's Office and City of Lebo. I'll second, again, thanks sheriff and everyone, county attorney, everyone involved in getting us to this point. Call, or Sarah, are you good to call for a vote?
Yep, yes.
Great.
I
Yes, I. The IGA for law enforcement services between the sheriff's office and City of Lebo is approved. Okay, Tim, are you, you wanna do work session?
It will be me, let's set a one o'clock meeting. Yes, thank you, Sheriff, I know that was not
Yeah, thank you, thank you everyone for all the help, it's quite the project.
That's the high point of your twenty twenty-four.
All right, so looking at two weeks out, so today we had today, the regular board meeting. I think we've already gone through this. Very fun one, June tenth, storytime on the courthouse lawn at the library, if anybody wants to join or volunteer to read. Do the work session agendas, I don't know if the agendas are on here or not. Oh, yeah, I have the work session agenda. So for next week's work session agendas.
So on the eleventh at nine. There's the BLM.
We're pulling it out, getting there. So nine AM. The Bureau of Land Management updates, a presentation by Airport Consultants Meet and Hunt regarding proposal for professional services on airport and commercial business development plans, including lease rates and parameters, revenue and cost generation, development plans and guidelines and implementation. And then the regular meeting and calendar review.
What's the, what's the second, what's the airport one compared to our current master planning?
So, yeah, so this is in regards to the work we've been doing and the research on development of the airport in discussing related to hangars. And so the Hunt, Meet and Hunt are consultants that have worked on hundreds of airport projects across the country, including some substantial ones in, here in Colorado. And they have a lot of expertise in terms of providing guidance on developing airports to their highest and best use, if you will. And so a big part of this is looking at, you know, rent rates and, you know, approaches to development and potential funding for that development. So we can move beyond the kind of piecemeal approach that's been used for like development of the hangars in the past and stuff to ensure that we are developing the airport in the best way forward, especially since it has a very likely potential for high revenue generation in its development, as well as how that will relate to the development of the off-airport property, including the business slash industrial part of development that we're looking at. So they, they have put together a presentation in, in terms of some of the work that they can help with. And then also all the staff that's listed, we will also be providing input as to what we can do in-house and with other resources. And in order to have a more comprehensive approach to looking at development of the airport in anticipation of revising the airport plan, which I think is coming up for next year.
We have RFPs ready soon after for both of those scopes?
Well, in the scope, the different scope of services, the proposal is in such a way that it can be phased for the work to be done. And so it isn't, it's professional services, so it isn't necessarily subject to having to go out to bid for the type of services that they'd be providing.
Yeah, aside from the airport, if that's, if that's what the director would suggest, okay, but what about the business part?
Oh, yeah, well, and that's what, in, in terms of what the, you know, how development of the airport will facilitate, if you will, or be a, you know, not cooperative, but complimentary, sorry, was the word I was looking for, complimentary aspect of developing the business slash industrial park. It, it's one of those things where we believe that the airport in the plan that's being proposed and the approach that might be taken could, could generate sufficient revenue to help spur more development for the business slash industrial park. And so that's, and that's why we asked for the work session on it, so we can kind of talk through the stuff that we've been researching with this consultant has looked at, what their experience is with other, you know, regional airports in Colorado and such that they've done and how that has worked. Because it's, a lot of research has shown that we have a very desirable, Lake County has a very desirable asset with the airport as, you know, the other area airports are pretty much built out. And so this is an opportunity for the county to really capitalize on this asset in a way that will help generate a lot more revenue for the airport and surrounding development, for economic development.
Yeah, absolutely, okay, awesome.
Then the afternoon work session, we have DHS coming to talk about the interpreter network and the community assessment expansion grant update. And then the strategic plan presentation for the interpreter network. And then after that, the plan on a page, quarterly updates and updates on the AIPs. Work session, work session. Looking forward on next week, there's the school district finance committee meeting, library board of trustees meeting, community coffee, typo with the homelessness subcommittee meeting, the Arkansas Basin Roundtable regular meeting on June twelfth, airport advisory board also on the twelfth, sanitation district, rec advisory board. Then moving on to the next week, the tourism panel meeting, your regular meeting on June eighteenth, conservation district meeting, we have Juneteenth, a holiday observed and celebrated. Soon community coffee might still happen. I believe the regional housing authority board meeting is canceled, we'll follow up with that. The twentieth, the wildfire mitigation town hall. The twenty-first, we have the fire management board meeting. And then some partner
You're, you're correct about the Wednesday evening meeting being canceled. It was rescheduled for the evening for four to six on the twentieth. It's a work session, it's a work session.
I think, I think fire management board got moved up, it's on my calendar, the seventeenth.
You're right. A gardening workshop, Friends of Lake County work party, planning commission. And then throughout, or round out the month, board work sessions and community coffee, wildfire, the second wildfire mitigation town hall, and then starts the race series.
Tim, do we have on the planner the site visits on this, on Thursday, this Thursday?
No.
Should we maybe include those?
Yeah, sure.
That all looks good to me.
Okay, we'll work with Liz, we'll get the regional housing authority fire management board, and then the board's site visits to the affordable home manufacturers updated. Who else want to add anything, Sheriff?
You good? Four, four to the month of June?
Yeah. Okay. All right, um, on the consent agenda, you have your December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting minutes.
The content looked so good.
Nope, goes for ya.
I just noted, uh, on paragraph fourteen, there's like a double, like explosive and explosives. It was like dou, there's like a double word or something, no, something to change.
Yeah, that looked good to me, I just had, I think it was in item ten, the HUD capitalized in that first sentence, I think it was. But other than that, they looked good.
Okay, cool. So I'll look for a motion to approve the consent agenda with the minor corrections noted.
So move.
Second, call for a vote?
Other discussions, hi.
Hi, so the December nineteenth regular meeting minutes are approved. And that concludes all our posted agenda items, so we can adjourn at one twenty-five PM. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.